Welcome to the candidate forum for Helena's school board election. This forum is expected to last about one and a half hours, so it should wrap up by eight. The League of Women Voters of the Helena area is sponsoring this candidate forum. The League of Women Voters is nonpartisan, so it does not promote any particular party or candidate. The League of Women Voters of the Helena area thanks the library and especially Suzanne Schwitzenberg for hosting this webinar. And thanks to the YWCA and Montana Women Vote who are co-sponsoring this event. And the League of Women Voters also thanks Jen Gersky, the Executive Director of the YWCA, who will be the moderator for this forum. And the special thanks goes to the five candidates who graciously agreed to participate in this forum. Eight candidates are running for the three open school board positions. In alphabetical order, the five candidates participating tonight are, and correct me if I mispronounce your name, Lois Fitzpatrick, Siobhan Hathorn, Kayle Kind, John McKeown, and Kay Satrie. Before we start, I'm going to review some of the basic rules. Each candidate will have two minutes to respond to the questions. But when they have 30 seconds remaining, I will hold up a sign, you know, alerting them that there's 30 seconds left. And then at the end of their two minutes, I'll hold up another sign so they know that their time is up. And we ask that they try their hardest to stick to the two minutes so that everybody has about an equal time to give their responses. There are six questions, and each candidate will have an opportunity to respond to each question. And we're going to start alphabetically, so we'll begin with Lois Fitzpatrick, then move to the next candidate in alphabetical order. And then the second question, we'll start with Siobhan Hathorn. And the third question will start with Kaylee Kind, you know, that's alphabetical order. And then just go around the five candidates in alphabetical order. So that each candidate will have an opportunity to be the first one to respond to a question. And these questions came from the community. We reached out to the community and to the high schools to get ideas for the questions. There will not be time given for rebuttals. There also will not be time for questions from the audience. However, at the end of the forum, we're going to have a slide that gives the email addresses for these five candidates. So if anybody wants to email them and ask them the question, you know, to help them decide who to vote for, they can get the email address at the end of this forum. And the candidates will start with their mics muted. And we ask that each candidate unmute themselves when it's their turn to speak, and then put themselves back on mute when they're done speaking. We're going to start with each candidate having two minutes to tell us why they are running and what makes them qualified to be a school trustee. And then Jen Gersky will launch into the six questions. So we'll start with, I guess, Lois, since we're going in alphabetical order. And Lois, if you didn't have two minutes to tell us why you're qualified and why you're running for the school board.
Thank you so much. As you know, my name is Lois Fitzpatrick, and I have lived in Helena since 1976. My two daughters have gone through Helena's school system. They both have masters now. They're both very successful in their careers. And I credit the Helena School District for giving them that opportunity. They were well-educated. I have five grandchildren, three of which are in the school system. And so I've been watching them anxiously as to what they're learning and how they're learning. I've been on the faculty at Carroll College for 34 years. I am a professor emeritus from the college. I have worked my entire life as a librarian. I've done children and young adult services. And I taught children's literature at Carroll. At Carroll, I was in charge of budgeting for the entire library, which was interesting. And I'll tell you, from 1997 until about 2009, I was lobbyist for the Montana Library Association up at the legislature. I believe in education. Librarians believe in education. And I was also endorsed by the Montana Education Association. Thank you.
Oh, excuse me. Siobhan, you're the next in order. I'm sorry, I muted myself.
Okay, I couldn't hear you, so thank you. My name is Siobhan Hathorn. I was born in Bush, Alaska, in a small village. My parents were the teachers there, so my roots are well-settled into rural education. My husband and I moved to Helena in 1989, and we raised our two daughters here who went through the Helena Public School System. And like Lois, I agree that they have had an excellent education and have been successful because of what they've learned in the Helena School System. I worked in the private sector for 12 years. I worked for engineering firms. And then I took a switch of careers and began a career in education and worked primarily at Broadwater and Roster Elementary Schools. I did one year in high school, so I have a pretty good idea of what is going on in the Helena School System, although it has been a few years now. It's nice to have that experience. I then worked for three years as an elementary principal in Cascade, Montana. And that was a really rewarding experience as well and broadened out my educational experience. I'm a huge fan of public education, and you'll hear more of that as we go through the answers. But I just think it's a great time in our lives where we are all together and learning from one another. I have been a proponent of public education my whole life and still am. Hopefully, should I be lucky enough to be re-elected, will be my second term on the board. Currently, I am the vice chair and the chair of the facilities committee. And I believe that I should be on the board because I believe that my educational experience can bring positive changes in decision-making to the board and also to ultimately to make a better educational experience for all of our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Kayle, would you go next?
Yes. Hello, my name is Kayle Kind, and I attended K-12 in the Helena School District, graduating from Capital High School in 1992. I have two young daughters that will be fourth-generation products of the Helena School District, and so also value public education. I went on to college and became an engineer, and I've had incredible opportunities as a result of that. And I give a lot of credit to that, to my time in the Helena School District. I was previously the facilities director for the Helena School District during the time of the elementary school bond and had the honor of running a $63 million bond and managing the construction of three new schools for our community, the first three schools, you know, in 41 years, and also safety security upgrades. I completed those projects on time and under budget. And so I understand the importance of being a good fiscal steward of taxpayer dollars. The time that I spent serving the students of this community, I will say today, has been the most personally and professionally rewarding point in my career. It was an honor to come back and give back. So humbly to the community that raised me, I worked alongside colleagues that were my classmates, and I worked alongside colleagues that were my past educators. And that's a really incredible experience. In five and a half years, I worked under four superintendents. And so I understand the inner workings of a school district. And I think that is a really unique experience that I bring to the table that I think will be a really incredible asset, not just to the board, but to the community at large. And ultimately, my entire purpose for wanting to serve as a board trustee is, for one thing, and is to serve what's best for students. Thank you.
Thank you very much. John, could you go next, please? Oh, John? Can he hear me? Uh-oh. Well, John? Hmm. Oh, maybe I'll go on to Kay and then we'll come back to John. John, can you hear me? I don't think he can hear me.
Hello?
Can you hear me? Yeah, John, it's your turn.
I'm John McKeown.
Yeah, thank you.
There's a weird delay at my end. I don't know if that's me, but anyway.
I'm sorry.
I'm John McKeown. Yes.
Oh, we're having everybody talk for two minutes.
No, I'm fine. Yeah. I'm... Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. I'm John McKeown. I've been on the board one term, and I'm asking to be re-elected. I'm interested in school issues. I was born and raised in eastern Montana, Lewiston. Uh-huh. Yeah.
I think there's something wrong with our connection.
I'm sorry. Something's going on here, so... I'm going to leave the meeting and come back in.
Okay. Yeah, why don't we go ahead and take it to Kay then, and then when you come back in, we'll go back to you.
Okay, should I go ahead? I'm so sympathetic to those technological issues after teaching on Zoom, you know, some of the time over these past couple of years. So, okay. First of all, I just want to say a quick thank you to the League of Women Voters for putting on this event. It takes a lot to do that, and it's awesome that you're giving us this chance to hear each other and to share our views with the public. I also want to thank all of you fellow candidates because, you know, we're doing this because we care about kids, we care about our schools. And we're also, you know, willing to spend our time and our energy and contribute our expertise to our public schools. Some of you, Siobhan and also John, have already done that in terms of serving on the board. So just want to say thank you. My background, I graduated from the Helena Public Schools. I actually went from second grade throughout here. My three adult children also were graduates of Helena Public Schools. And as others of you have said, I think we very much value the education that we received here. I was pretty involved as a parent in my kids' classrooms as they came through the system. I'm a soon-to-be-retired Carroll professor. I've taught literature and writing at Carroll for over 30 years. And I'm eager to apply and also to extend my knowledge of education by serving on the board. So why am I running? I am a big believer in public education because it gives kids, you know, a chance to learn and to grow under the guidance and care of professional educators. I have a very positive view of our district. And I think Helen is very fortunate because we have such a strong tradition of quality public education. I'm eager to climb aboard and use my energy, my expertise, to contribute to the good work going on in schools. I'm also interested in engaging with some of what I think are going to be challenges in the next little while. So my time is up, and I will look forward to responding to other questions.
Thank you very much. And I don't see that John's got back in. So I guess because our time is limited, I'm going to turn everything over to Jen Gersky, and then she can start asking questions. And hopefully, John will be able to join us soon. Take it away, Jen.
Thanks, Claire, and League of Women Voters and the library. And I also heard Montana Women Vote. Strong presence for women tonight. Thanks for our participants, and also thanks for those who have logged on to listen to such critical issues and explanations of a pretty important race in our community. So the first question is going to go to Ms. Fitzpatrick first. We'll start that order again through the questions. And as we go through the list of folks answering, let me know if you want me to restate the question, okay? Make sure that you keep an eye on Claire as she will be your timer. And if you are not finished when time wraps up, there will be some generosity given, but not much. So don't make me mute you. Okay. First question. If elected, what do you hope to accomplish as a school board trustee? And that first question goes to Ms. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you so much. If I'm elected, what I would hope to accomplish is an in-depth look at the budget and seeing where things might be better repurposed. I would like to make sure that the children and the faculty and staff are given the resources that they need to be able to teach completely in the school system. I would like to see the joy continue with children learning because I think that's extremely important. Other things I would like to do is, as Kay said, is to learn more, to be honest with you. I think my background, my strengths are there, and I think that I could be extremely helpful. One of the things I would like to see is that there's a closer connection with the school board and with the legislative process because money comes from there, and we need to make sure that they understand local issues. Yes, there are many people who testify on behalf of schools. I used to do it for school libraries, but we have the inside track, and we have to know what is going on and what we can accomplish. I would like to see the schools continue doing as well as they're doing. I would like to see us with great communication skills, not only among ourselves on the board, but between the public and the students and teachers. We're there to help support them. So I think I'm just about ended, and thank you so much.
Thank you. We'll toss that question to Ms. Hathorn.
Thank you. I have several priorities. My number one priority is academic excellence. And what that means to me is that every child who enters our school system at any point has multiple opportunities to reach their highest potential. When I was a principal at Cascade, our elementary school was awarded a Blue Ribbon School for Academic Excellence, not based on achieving the highest spot, but on achieving the greatest growth. And it's that growth model that's so important to me, that every parent sends their kid to school. And we, as an educational community, have the ability to meet those unique needs and grow them up as fast and as far as we can. My second priority is fiscal responsibility, making sure that our tax dollars are put to their best possible use to improve education and the experience of our educators and our students. My third priority would be quality facilities. I'm currently the facilities chair. We need to make sure that all of our students and staff have access to modern educational facilities that support the way that we teach and that provide both social, emotional, and safe environments for our folks that spend a good portions of their lives there. The next one is one that is important and sometimes can get lost in the shuffle. But school is not only super-important on so many levels, but it's also just really fun. It's a great community. It's a fun place to be. Kids are excited to be with their friends and their teachers and just continue to do those extracurriculars and those other additional things that make it a really positive place to be. Next is parent involvement. All of us educators know that the parent involvement has a huge impact on the success of a student's journey through school. So finding more and more ways to bring parents into the fold and encourage them to do what they're doing to support education and their children. And finally, and not any less important, continue to support our high-quality educators in every way, including compensation and access to everything that they need. And my time is also up, so I will turn it over to the next person. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Ms. Kind, if elected, excuse me, if elected, what do you hope to accomplish as a school board trustee?
Well, as I stated before, I think first and foremost that, you know, when the board sits up there as a group of professional colleagues, that every action that they take remains focused on students. A lot of conversations come before the board, a lot of discussions are had, but at the heart of it all is students. And so just ensuring that in all that we do, that we are keeping students as our first priority. I also think it's important to really look at our talented educators and look for ways to retain them. You know, we've had a couple of opportunities where we are incentivizing our educators to leave for budget shortfalls. We have a nationwide shortage of educators, and we have incredibly talented educators in our community. And I think that that is not the place where we reconcile budgets. I think that we need to retain talented educators, and we need to find more ways to recruit additional talented educators. When we are the district that people want to come work for, we also entice new, young families to want to move to our community. And we want more students to think, you know, Helena School District is the number-one place. So retention and recruiting educators is huge for me. Of course, the budget, the budget is absolutely imperative. We have an incredible business manager at the Helena School District, and she does incredible work. But it takes an entire leadership team to have a successful budget. And I think there's no surprise that there are some budget issues. And I think that it's important that we work together to be good fiscal stewards of that budget, and we make sure that we really go through it with a fine tooth comb, and we understand and appreciate how those dollars are being spent, why they're being spent that way, why positions are being added, and ensure that those decisions are truly being made because it's what's best for students. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Next, we'll go to Mr. McKeown. Welcome back, Mr. McKeown. I'll go ahead and restate the question for you. Can you hear us?
Hi.
Hi there. There's still a significant lag. I'm going to go ahead and read the question.
I can hear you fine, yeah.
Great. If elected, what do you hope to... Yes. I'm going to go ahead and read the question. Once I'm finished reading the question, go ahead and speak, and your answer for two minutes. If elected, what do you hope to accomplish as a school board trustee?
Okay. Okay. I want to continue to focus on the basic purpose of our public education, which is to give our citizen students the tools to participate in our economy or culture and to lead or have the basics of a healthy lifestyle. The district has some challenges. You know, several of the candidates talked about the budget. We need to go through a process to identify our priorities. What do we absolutely have to do? What maybe can't we get along? What can we get along without? Our facilities, I'd like to, I'd love to have a new central kitchen, but some of our buildings need some work. Even though we have three new schools, and we've done the safety, security upgrades to those schools, there's one or two buildings, but maybe we don't need. And there's some that certainly need work. Finally, it's important that our workers have the resources to do their work. The fundamental function of management is to give employees the resources to do their jobs. And I continually ask that question in each of our budget sessions that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. And the final candidate for this question is Ms. Satrie.
Okay, thank you. So of course, all of the pieces and parts have to work together, all the intersecting issues with budgets, with retaining and recruiting faculty and educators of all kinds, and making sure their resource so they can do their work well. I'm going to comment on three more specific priorities that have come to mind. First of all, I think we have to address COVID stresses. There have been student learning losses. There's been a lot of stress throughout our communities in students, teachers, parents. And so I think it's important that we kind of be in there. The district's made a good start on this with learning coaches and summer sessions, but that would certainly be a specific priority for me. A related issue is just communication. Communication around education is always challenging because there's a, you know, serious investment in our kids and in schools. And I'm just wondering how communication between all parties, especially between leadership and parents in the district, can be improved. And finally, facilities, master planning processes underway. And I think this is a priority for our district. It's already been mentioned a couple of times. We have three beautiful new elementary buildings, but shifts in population are putting pressure on our facilities. Helena High, I believe, has lost about 30% of its enrollment as the East Helena District has opened up fully for the high school there. 60% of our K-8 kids live north of Custer Avenue, but only three of our 11 elementary schools are located north of Custer Avenue. And many of our buildings have been upgraded, but they're still pretty old. These are big challenges. We have to tackle them. So I'd say, you know, in a nutshell, three outcomes. I'd like to see that we've made up pre-COVID learning losses and seen improvement in students and educators' well-being, that we've built more effective communication bridges, especially between district leadership and parents, and that we have a good, comprehensive facilities plan that will take us through the next 10, 15, even more years. Thank you.
Thank you. Each of you were so excellent at keeping it to your two-minute timeframe that we're going to give you another question. Ms. Hathorn, we are going to start with you with question number two, and then in the same order, leaving Ms. Fitzpatrick as the last person to provide the answer. Question number two. Discuss the role Helena's public school system plays in the life of the community. What steps would you take as a school board trustee to strengthen Helena's public school system? Discuss the role Helena's public school system plays in the life of the community. What steps would you take as a school board trustee to strengthen Helena's public school system? Ms. Hathorn?
Well, the public school system is completely integral to our community, and I believe all communities across Montana. Montana is one of the few states that I am really proud to be a part of their public education because it's still intact. We do not have a lot of charter schools. We do not have a lot of public, private schools. And most of our citizens attend public schools. It's a gathering place. It's entertainment to a certain degree with our extracurriculars. I think our communities really celebrate the achievements, and we have a lot of pride in our educators and in our students. Also, I think more nuts and bolts. Our facilities are an important part for the community. And as we look forward, we need to look at ways that we can collaborate with our community and maybe provide facilities that are multipurpose, both from an educational and extracurricular perspective to a community involvement and a place to be. So those would be a... So those would be a several areas where we are just very integral into the Helena community. Could you please repeat the second part of that question?
Yeah. What steps would you take as a school board trustee to strengthen Helena's public school system?
Well, I think one of the ways that we need to continue to strengthen our system is as the educational framework changes, we need to remain competitive. We have some very nice new schools close to us. Jefferson is is promoting a rebuild. We've got East Helena. We've lost some students there. And I think that we need to continue to provide academic excellence and also don't be afraid to recruit and to show off what we have. So that would be one way. And then also.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hathorn, your time is up.
Oh, I I am, I apologize. I didn't see my warning sign. So, thank you.
Um, Ms. Kind, I'm gonna go ahead and rephrase it because it is a two-part question. Discuss the role Helena's public school system plays in the life of the community. What steps would you take as a school board trustee to strengthen Helena's public school system?
Well, I think the Helena School District plays an extremely vital role in the community. And I think our schools are everything to everyone. You know, when we were building three new schools and we brought stakeholders to the table, our schools aren't just buildings that educate children. They're community centers, they're community gathering places. We have community events there, our playgrounds, our neighborhood playgrounds, our food services, you know, we feed an enormous amount of our children. And for a lot of children, you know, we have a very vast demographic of students that we serve. And, you know, just the food services we provide are critical to those children. And those extend through summer months. And we do so many different types of outreach on behalf of children. But I really think that we are the staple of our community. We we really set the tone for people wanting to move here. And I I don't think we can ever underestimate what that role is to our community and what we carry on our shoulders with that. I think that steps to strengthen that, I think we need to continue to be forward-thinking. I think we need to continue to have momentum. I understand that, you know, it's not common to keep superintendents for, you know, maybe twenty years, but it's hard when you have continual turnover of your top leadership to maintain continuity and be progressive. You know, we've had conversations for the entire time I was there about a high school bond or the last of my school district run a high school bond. But, you know, with that constant turnover, we lose that continuity. And I think that that's important. Those are important. Those are important items to attract people to our community, but those are important things for our facilities and and deferred maintenance that we have. So my biggest thing is just, you know, recognizing that that we are a pillar in our community. We we serve and and we do everything. Teachers fill the gaps. Teachers are everything to every child that walks through their door. And we just have to continue investing. And by being good fiscal stewards, we show our community that it is worthy to invest in the school district. Somebody paid for our education. We need to continue to invest in our future. And we want people to support that.
Thank you. Mr. McEwan, discuss the role Helena's public school system plays in the life of the community. What steps would you take as a school board trustee to strengthen Helena's public school system?
What, so I switched devices, so. So what's, can you repeat the question?
You, let me read it one more time. I'll slow it down a bit, too. Discuss the role Helena's public school system plays in the life of the community. What steps would you take as a school board trustee to strengthen Helena's public school system?
What steps? Go to the, do my job, which is reading, keeping up on the issues in front of the school, helping to make decisions, good decisions about how our school should run. The being on the board requires time and effort, commitment, and, you know, willingness to study and understand, listen, listen and respond. So certainly, our schools, seventy-six hundred students and nearly a thousand staff gather every school day. And that's, that's an impact on on just traffic flow, school buses. And and the activities that the school sponsors that involve our community are are numerous. I mean, ranging, of course, from sports to the arts to every, every parent, every citizen to go drive the street. So those are the kinds of things I like to do to enhance and connect our community on a school.
Thank you. Ms. Satri.
Okay, so what role does the school play in the life of the community? That's the first part of the question, right? Okay, so as a couple of people have already said, our our schools are places that bring kids and families and neighborhoods together in learning, in enjoying just time spent. I think they are, you know, vital hubs of of creating relationship in our communities. I think there are also ways that our schools help our students in the schools actually learn about their communities. And that plays an important role in community as well, whether it's learning about, you know, diverse members of their community, learning about opportunities and responsibilities. And certainly, we all hope that public schools will prepare students to become productive members of their community as, you know, citizens, as, you know, people who are productive workers and good family members. So there's a, there's a whole number of ways that schools support communities. You know, I think that the second part of the question, what do we do to the schools to make sure that they are continuing to contribute to sort of community development? I probably have a fairly general, but I think strong response, which is that we have to stay strong in providing quality education for our students. And that includes providing all kinds of extracurricular activities so that, you know, that people keep, so that that those good benefits that come from the schools keep flowing out into the community. We can also create partnerships with the community, and I know that we already do that. Those are good ways also to strengthen those ties where the schools and the community interact and are mutually reinforcing. And the last thing I'll just say is we can share the stories as board members, I think in particular, really celebrate what's happening in our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Fitzpatrick, would you like me to reread the question or do you think you've got it?
I think I have it.
All right.
I will say going last is a lot easier than going first. Because you get time to think a little bit. I have to concur with what everyone has said. Our schools are and should be the heart of the community. Things should be coming out from the schools that parents, grandparents and community members are learning from. And we should be inviting in the community to the art, to the theater, to music, and to the sports. I'm a firm believer in in a a holistic type of education. And so that's how I feel that, you know, it's a community treasure. It needs to be there. It needs to be supported. And as people see what the schools do, they will be more inclined to help support. It's a two-way street. What would I do better? Again, I'm gonna harp on communications because communications is crucial to understanding, to learning, to knowing what is going on. And that's between everyone, but especially for the the teachers and the staff and the students. We need to know what they're thinking and they need to know what we're thinking. And we need to know what the community's thinking. And I think maybe by a series of forums, you could find that information out. And that would help with ongoing information and and strengthening of our school district. Thank you.
Fantastic. My third question will start with Ms. Kind. Nationally, school boards are being asked by some parents to remove specific books from the library. If a parent asks for a book to be removed from the school library, what reasoning would you use to help you decide whether or not to keep the book or remove the book from the school library?
I think nationwide, what I feel like we see is a lot of rush to judgment and a lot of decisions that are being made. And a lot of these decisions have long-lasting impacts on our children. And so first and foremost, I think that as a board, we need to be good listeners. And we need to take time to listen, to understand what people, the issue is at hand, what the concerns are. You know, what the real issue at hand is. And first and foremost, we don't ever make decisions based on emotion. You know, we have an obligation to the community and to the students to make informed decisions. I think by listening and taking time to inform ourselves and to gather information, we can make the best decisions possible for the students that we serve. But I think my approach would be no rush to, no rush to judgment. I think, again, we'd be good listeners. We have a very thorough process and a very methodical approach. But I just think there's a lot of information that comes into those type of decisions. And so I think it's taking the time to understand the reasoning behind a request like that and really doing our research to understand what the impact is on the students and no rush to judgment.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. McEwan, this one bounces to you.
It's easy. Follow the policy. We have a robust policy regarding our library and media arts materials. And we follow, our policy even contains reference to, you know, National Library Association Freedom to Read, or there are several different standards they apply. And if a book is challenged, there's a process outlined or referred to in our policy. And the important thing that that then a committee can go through, do the analyses of what the book is about and make make a recommendation to the board. The, you know, our policy provides for having a wide range of materials available to our students that supplant and enhance the the basic curriculum that that's contained that our teachers follow. And so media and library materials should support that. And you know, the, there, like I say, there is a process in place and it's robust and it's well-thought-out and follows best practices in choosing those kinds of materials. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Satri.
Okay, thank you. I will follow nicely upon John's response to that question. I absolutely agree that the first thing you need to do is consult the Helena Public Schools policies. And yes, we do have robust policies on these matters. It includes basic sort of descriptions and criteria for making decisions and a and a process for bringing challenges. So the specific policy here would be handling questioned or, excuse me, handling challenged or questioned material. And as John noted, books are resources, it says, will not be excluded because of the race, nationality, political or religious values of the writer or the material's style or language. It also says that every every effort will be made to provide materials that present all points of view concerning the international, national and local problems and issues of our time. So it's a policy that really affirms the the value of having students encounter multiple points of view and really work on, talk about the problems and issues of our times. These policies, also, I just wanna, you know, comment, they don't arise in a vacuum. They align and they come from or informed by many state and national standards that come from curriculum and libraries, which are developed through many layers of input and feedback from all kinds of professional educators. So these policies that we have, you know, are formed and informed through all these, through all these sources. So the bottom line, as John said, you follow the process laid out by the policy. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Ms. Fitzpatrick.
This is a question right up my alley. You know, I've been a professional librarian since nineteen seventy-five and worked in libraries from nineteen seventy. I think when materials are questioned, and I had them questioned at Carol, but I've also seen it go through the school board. The first thing I think you have to realize is that our librarians are professionals. They do know what they're doing. They are looking at professional reviewing media to see how the book is reviewed, what the problems might be. They look at their selection policy and as John and Kay said, they are are for the recreational use of the children, the curriculum support for the faculty and children. And there's all variety of of materials that can be challenged, unfortunately. But by remembering that we have professionals, we have policies and that they are followed. And, you know, when you take a look at selection policies, they tell you what to consider and what not to consider. The one thing that, and and I know it's part of the policy because I've testified in front of the school board on challenged materials in the past. You can't take one section of a book out or one picture or one word. It has to be taken as a whole. And that's what the Supreme Court says. And so I think we need to relax a little and read the entire thing and think and express the concerns you may have, but let's keep an open mind. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Ms. Hathorn.
Thank you. It's not easy to go right after a librarian with fifty years of experience. I'll do my best. First of all, I think it's really important, like some of the other candidates have mentioned, that these books are not just randomly placed into the library. So first of all, they're thoroughly vetted by professional librarians who spend a lot of time making sure that they are correct in their maturity levels and offer many points of view and are, meet a lot of the needs of the children. And they stay away from books that that are not appropriate for libraries. So just to start off with, you want to start by knowing that we have a good selection of books that's been well thought out. Secondly, a lot of parents don't know, but they have the right to request that their particular child does not have access as far as checking out any type of material. So removing it from the library, many parents may may be satisfied just by being offered the opportunity to have their child not check out that book. And it's a very easy process, a form that you work with a librarian and the school principal to get that done. If it does move forward, the board is the ultimate responsible party for challenged books and whether they will be removed from the shelf. And like some of the candidates have already mentioned, there is a a process that is already there. So as a board member, you're really just at the very tail end of the issue. So it it goes, it goes into a challenge mode and there's a committee, and the committee is varied. The committee has four parents, four administrators, four teachers, four librarians, one district library administrator and one district curriculum administrator. And there's a whole process that they go through. So by the time it comes to the board, it's pretty well-vetted. And then at that point, if it does come, the board needs to be open-minded and look at all the information that has been put before it. So really, as a board- the board needs to be open minded and look at all the information that has been put before it. So really as a board member, um, by the time it gets to the board level, it, it should be pretty simple and hopefully parents will feel that they have options and librarians will feel and students and teachers will feel that um books uh that offer a lot to a lot of kids will remain on the shelves. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we are halfway there. Um, question number four, Mr. McEwen, you will go first. Question number four is, there has been national attention on lessons taught in public schools about the history of America's race relations. Do you support teaching the history of race relations in America? If not, what lessons about our racial history would you like to ban from the classroom? And how would you enforce such a ban?
Well, let's see. I'm not against teaching about race, racial relations. The just today I was looking at the curriculum. I, I scanned our social studies curriculum that's, that's online. And it covers, it's um pretty thorough. At least the, the history, I was reading the, some of the points about what is taught in our history curriculum. And certainly you students are gonna learn who we are, where we've been, and what, how people have been treated, one way or the other. The no, I'm not against solid learning about our culture and our government in, in its past and current actions and configuration. So the there's, there has been no issues in, in Helen Public Schools regarding our, our curriculum, uh, our social studies curriculum, at least in the three years I've been on the board. And I don't um, some of what you hear nationally is is um I don't know, just kind of made up stuff that most of us are smart enough to realize that we were fine, what we do and what our children are learning. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Satri, I'm gonna go ahead and read that question one more time and hopefully we can go through it. There has been national attention on lessons taught in public schools about the history of America's race relations. Do you support teaching the history of race relations in America? If not, what lessons about our racial history would you like to ban from the classroom? And how would you enforce such a ban?
Okay, so first of all, I would say, yes, I do believe in teaching race relations as part of our history. I think our district policy also aligns with this. Um, the policy and instruction says that instructional programs, methods, resources should meet the needs of each student regardless of race, color, creed, sex, sexual orientation, or level of ability. Um, so I think our policies would indicate that race is an issue that certainly has a place in our classroom. Um, and maybe I'll just note here that, you know, fifty years ago, our state constitution mandated Indian education for all. It's a great example of sort of um insisting that history uh is taught in our schools um in a way that acknowledges the experience of, you know, our Indian students, for instance, and that will also provide for a fuller understanding of our history and our culture. So um, yeah, are there any limits? Certainly age appropriateness of curriculum and materials is a definite limitation on teacher's lessons plan. Um, but I really have a lot of faith, as we've already heard from other candidates uh in our professional educators and also in the curriculum and standards upon which their lessons are based, which are very, you know, carefully vetted. So my position on this issue aligns very much with our current district policy. I'm concerned about any gag orders cropping up. And as John said, they haven't so much come to Helena yet. Um, but when it's linked to the fear about making someone uncomfortable by talking about racism in the past or present, because gag orders have negative consequences. It distorts history. It erases or silences individuals' experiences. It undermines our understanding of self and others. And it puts even more pressure on our teachers to navigate minefields while they're doing the already really challenging task of teaching classrooms full of kids. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patzpatrick.
Yes, um to concur with the, the prior candidates, um, I am not opposed to any kind of racial history being taught in our schools. Um, as Kay said, it does have to be age appropriate. That goes without saying, you know, saying to be quite honest with you. Um, by knowing what we, what has happened in the past, we can correct present and future. And that is how we have to do it. I grew up in the streets in New York. When I tell people what I used to do, bringing library service to the unserved, they don't believe me. And so there is a way of leveling the field if we all know what's going on. Um, I would say that it's not just related to history and social sciences. I would say literature is also a, a very important part of teaching our cultural history. And that we need to do, um, but bans, no, I, I'm, I'm against bans. I think if there's a, a something coming up, maybe the teacher needs to contact the parents, send them an email, tell them this is what we're going to be teaching, this is how it's going to be presented, and allow them to feel comfortable with what our professional educators are going for. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Hathorn.
Thank you. Um, I also um believe that we need to um teach whatever in our standards. I think it's important to know that sometimes in the press, people get the idea that teachers can just grab whatever they want and teach it. Well, there's a process and the process starts, um, states have the choice, but our state has decided to adopt the common core standards from our national uh uh teaching associations, and they have added in Indian, Indian education for all. And then they, to, to get the local control, the district um comes up with curriculums that would be programs, personnel, material, everything that meets those standards. And that's where it becomes um local and the local control comes in. And then it's up to the administration to make sure that those um, that their teachers are following the district curriculum, which are inherently tied to the state standards. So the idea that we have, we can just decide to teach race or not teach race or whatever is not really a reality. Teachers are doing what is um guided by a lot of upper level professionals and they have the choices to um meet those standards in the way that best meets their students and in the ways that best meets their teaching style. So um, absolutely um no bans on, I, I don't even know how that would actually happen because it's, there's already a process in place um for making sure that teachers are doing what they should. Um, that said, um, in these times, I think it's super important to provide a balanced approach. And just to grab a really uh well-used cliche, it is our job as educators to teach how to think, not what to think. Um, I want to give you an example of uh one of the best lessons I ever saw. It was when I was um uh administrator in Cascade, Montana. And the agricultural um instructor was um doing uh an agricultural lesson. And he turned it into a debate where he had three different groups. They were all ranching kids. One of them had to take a viewpoint.
Time is up, so wrap it up pretty quickly.
Okay, um, can I? For some reason, when I'm up, the signs aren't coming up because they're not blocked up on my screen. But that, the person who's holding up the sign is not visible to me.
Hmm, that might be a view. You might wanna go change your view to gallery view so you can see Claire.
Okay, I'll do that. Can I finish up this one and then be more careful in the future? I thought I missed it last time, but this time I've been watching really carefully. So I'll finish my story and finish up and, and we'll get it fixed. Okay, so um anyways, a great lesson. And um it was, they, it was a, a agricultural debate. And one group, even though they're ranchers, had to take position of PETA. One group had to take an environmental preservation perspective, and one group had to take an agriculture perspective. And the, the ranching children um at first were really adamantly opposed to taking a position that wasn't their way of thinking. But when they got it done, they all got together and it, let them look at things from another point of view. And I think that that's the way that we really need to address this issue and try to bring more people into the fold by um just looking at instruction from um a very balanced and unbiased position. And uh thank you very much for the little bit of time I went over. I really appreciate it.
Thank you. And let's wrap up this question number four with Ms. Kine.
Um, I will echo a lot of the comments made by the prior candidates and, and specifically Ms. Hawthorne, because I think that people need to understand that again, our curriculum is research-based and we do follow state and national standards. And I think that um a lot of times what what you're hearing in the media and maybe the fear that's provoked is maybe a perception and maybe not the reality. I think we have incredible educators in our community who already have processes in place to work out, um work directly with parents who maybe have concerns over some of the curriculum. I know in particular for my daughter, I recently received a letter from one of her educators asking if I wanted her to opt out of some information. And so I think we have a lot of vehicles in place to be sensitive to families that may have concerns. But I think through just some education communication, I think people um would have a better understanding of what actually is being taught. I think it's important to teach history. I think as we say, you know, if we don't learn our history and we learn it factually, we're doomed to repeat it. And I think um there's incredible things about our history that uh make us better people. And if we don't understand how we got to where we're at and, and maybe the suffering that people went through, then we really can appreciate, you know, the freedoms and the privileges we have today. So I, I'm a huge advocate of teaching our history. I think that we have incredible professionals in our community in this school district who work very hard to do it in a way that best serves our students and community. Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Okay, on to question number five. Ms. Satri, you're going to be the first one answering this. Uh, one of the strategic priorities for Helena Public Schools is to ensure a culture that fosters students' self-awareness, self-reg- excuse me, self-awareness, self-regulation, and social awareness. All skills necessary to function in current day society. How do you interpret this strategic priority? And what steps would you take to address this priority? Do you interpret this strategic priority to include awareness and acceptance of children born with different, differing sexual orientations? Let me go and read that one more time. One of the strategic priorities for Helena Public Schools is to ensure a culture that fosters students' self-awareness, self-regulation, and social awareness. All skills necessary to function in current day society. How do you interpret this strategic priority? And what steps would you take to address this priority? Do you interpret this strategic priority to include awareness and acceptance of children born with differing sexual orientations?
Okay, that's a lot. Um, thank you for that question, though. Um, I, I uh have seen this strategic priority and felt happy to see it um on the, on the Helena Public Schools um website. Um, I think also another part of it that's included there is also um fostering a sense of interdependence. Um, so I'll go to your last question first. Do I think that um this speaks to um creating an open and accepting environment for um kids who um are LGB, uh LGBTQ plus? Yes, I do. Um, I definitely think that that speaks to the importance that there are all kinds of diversity um and that our schools need to support that. I also think that's part of, you know, our, our instructional sort of policies too, is that the school offers opportunities for students um that um are open to race, class, sex, um gender, um and also different abilities. So I'm trying to think about what the other part of your question was, how, what is it that we do to help um promote this particular strategic um priority? Well, I certainly think that, that discussions in the classroom, the kinds of materials um that are probably already in um many of the materials in the classroom and the things that students are reading um in the kinds of discussions that they have, that um those kinds of priorities are going to be um promoted, that kind of awareness. Um, I think actually just having it stated as a priority is a really important thing because then that communicates itself to the teachers, the, everybody who's working um in the building, that these are things that we want to support um and, you know, kind of promote and um yeah, an attitude of respect and behaviors that um model respect. Promoting those to the kids and also um through all the, the staff.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Patzpatrick.
Um, I love the question, to be honest with you. Uh, when we take a look at um fostering self-awareness, self-regulation, and social awareness, what we're saying to the child is, you are you. You are important. Someone else might be a little different, but you know, they're just as important. And as we work through diversity and, and awareness and support, because a lot of the kids are afraid and scared. And I can tell you, even when I was at Carroll College, I would have students coming in to me saying, I think I'm gay. And it's like, okay, let's talk about it. Let's find someone who can help you with this. And so it's their way of expressing to us and our way of expressing back to them. Um, once again, as a librarian, I have to say there are numerous children's book, middle school age books and high school books that deal with this. And they come in from picture books all the way up to more sophisticated senior level. And that is so important for a child to be able to read and say, you know, I can kind of relate to that. And then be able to start a discussion. If they can do it at home, that's so much better. But if they can't, then they do it at school. Um, the one thing that they will learn is that there is diversity among all children, there's diversity among all adults, and we need to foster understanding and caring and understanding that everyone is important and everything that they do is important. Um, I don't see the timer either, so I think I'm probably out of time.
You just got the sign that time is up.
All right.
Wonderful gut instinct there. Um, Ms. Hathorn, are you able to see Claire?
I, I am. I'm ready to be right on schedule.
Okay, I was offering to give a verbal thirty second, but if you can see her, I won't.
I've got it, thank you.
Okay. All right, you are up.
I'm up, okay. All right, um to answer the first part of the question, self-awareness, self-regulation, and social awareness, I didn't really understand the importance of this until I became a teacher. For whatever reason, we are getting more and more kids that uh have had a rough start. And um basically, I did all of my uh the entire amount of my uh teaching experience, educational experience was entitled on schools, which, which um just statistically have kids. the entire amount of my uh teaching experience, educational experience was entitled one schools, which which um just statistically have kids that have a rougher beginning. And it is imperative that we have those programs and that teachers get the time and the training to um uh not only help the kids that are struggling, but also to be able to teach, basically, to be able to keep your classroom moving along. And um I just really uh fell in love with working with kids with uh emotional challenges and was so rewarding to see um the improvements that they made and and watching them fold into the classroom. Uh, the social awareness part, um uh bullying is something that always has been and always will be. Um, it seems to be a bit of human nature, but the work that our educators are doing to make the school a better place to be socially, I think, is absolutely remarkable. And when I had my HEA interview, they asked me if there was one area that I would would not consider cutting. And and I had to answer, it would be social emotional programs. They're they're just imperative for the success of all kids. Oh, thirty seconds left. Um, I'll skip uh right ahead to um just people of different orientations. Public schools are wonderful because everyone's included. And that means everyone. That's what we are challenged to do and that is what we do do. So we don't need to make a big deal about one thing or another. It just always boils down to respect. We accept, we respect, we listen to everyone and making sure that everyone is heard and has a voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kind.
All right, um I concur with so much of what's been said. I think that um the mental, social, and emotional health of our students is um a top priority and especially coming out of COVID. Um, I think that everyone would echo that maybe those needs have multiplied. Um, I think that having social emotional learning skills for our students is paramount. And you know, we we talk about, you know, social, sexual orientation and and being um accepted in our in our schools, but there's so much more than just that one topic. I mean, let's talk about suicide. Let's talk about mental illness. Um, I'm a product of this school district and that has been an epidemic since I was in school. It was an epidemic, you know, for my older siblings. And and these are issues that don't go away. And so when we talk about social and emotional learning, it encompasses every aspect of a being, not just one. I mean, there's so many things and so many struggles that I think kids come to the forefront with every day that, again, like um was said previously, unless you work in this school district, you really can't appreciate what a child might walk in with. And and I don't think it's just one thing. And I think that we need to be aware that it's it's things you don't even want to dream of. But I think that those skills and having teachers have the curriculum to be able to to help children navigate through those times and those issues is paramount. Because I agree, I think that um we're trying to make everyone be the best version of themselves. And and whatever that version is, you wake up every day and you be the best version of you that you can be. And I think that's what's important. But I think that kids have so much pressure and there's so much put on them in our society. And these skills are paramount to having them be um successful in their in their life, but successful in their education. And so I think more of those resources are critical for our district and, you know, for all districts across the country. Thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Mr. McKeon.
Thank you. I think the the operative words in this question and in the in the mission to the strategic, the objective, I guess, is interdependence and twenty-first century skills. And we're all in this together. That's what we want our children to learn. And starting in kindergarten, first grade, you know, the little work groups, you know, working together on projects. And so that but and so they get used to each other and how differences in kids. And so by the time they're in high school, they'll have learned those coping skills, one recognizing who themselves are as well as who everyone else is. And and hopefully, although humans are humans, you know, there's going to be cliques and this and that, but it's, to me, it's difficult. It's hard to get through to accomplish those objectives of be, we're all in this together. And what we're, I'm just watching some people down the street. They're building a house and three, four people are setting up forums to pour the basement. Well, they got to work together regardless of big, tall, short, fat, whatever. So I, what I think, I I assume that once if we're doing it correctly, that once our children reach high school age and they recognize and um don't care about some of these differences that that seem to get us all cut up in arguments about this and that. The other thing, you know, whether someone's gay or they're you know, the the best player on the basketball team or or they can't even walk and chew gum at the same time. Hopefully, all of us, all of our children are accepting and the programs that we put in place, even the spaces, you know, the new schools, the elementary schools have this collaboration space, you know, which um plays a role. And once if this all works, once they get to the workplace, in the twenty-first century workplace, there's so much collaboration going on that if we can't um teach these skills, then they'll fit our students will fail out in the workplace. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, this is our final question of the evening. Ms. Fitzpatrick, you are going to go first. Question number six. As a school board trustee, you will be responsible for overseeing hiring policies for Helena School District teachers. Currently, to obtain an educator license in Montana, a person is required to complete an accredited educator preparation program. To address ongoing teacher shortages, the Board of Public Education has proposed alternative, less stringent pathways to obtaining a teacher license, teaching license. Please explain your position on what it takes to be prepared and qualified to teach in Montana's public schools.
That is is quite a question. Um at Carroll, I was, I helped write hiring policies. I was on hiring committees, not just for the library, but for case department, for the computer science department, you name it, I was in on it. Um, we all had the same basics, but then we had the specialties that we needed. And I think that's important, that is from an accredited education um program and not one of the the lesser modes because you you I know at at any education association uh and gaining a degree, you have to take not just education classes, you have to take history, math, social sciences, literature. You name it, it's a full curriculum. And the only way that we're able to do that is by being in these fully accredited institutions where we have time to do that, where we have time to go out. I mean, our freshmen used to go out into the schools and observe. And they do more observation, they do student teaching, they do practicums. You have to have all that, or I don't think you're giving our students the best educator that they need. So once again, I can't see, I forgot to start my my stopwatch.
Thirty seconds left.
Okay, I would just say that I would I would be opposed to it. I would like to see Helena to continue doing accredited um educational institutions, not just in the state, but throughout the country.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Hathorn.
Uh, thank you. Um, I'm gonna have to put two hats on here. First of all, um, want to start by saying that uh education is a second career for me. And um I came in a little overconfident. It is really, really a hard profession. And you really need to know what you're doing. And even if you have a really good background um from your university or your accredited program, it still takes at least three years to get up to speed. It's it's just, we really need to appreciate our educators and and how much they have to put together to get to make it through a day and to do all the tasks that there has to do. Um, that said, um, I don't believe that Helena has a uh teaching shortage. Um, you know, Helena is a wonderful place to live. Um, we usually get a lot of applicants for our openings. There are a couple areas, special ed, I believe, consumer science, business education, those are hard to fill. But generally, we have kind of the pick of the creme de la creme. So for a Helena perspective, I wish that the it that we could have the most stringent and to get the best educators possible that are the most trained up. However, I have also worked in a very small district where we couldn't fill positions, literally could not fill them. And so I understand the perspective that the state is taking. In fact, uh, the woman who was um spiriting, that was um one of my teachers when I was principal at Cascade. And I know she's very, very competent and capable. So I think it's one of those things that whether you agree with it or not, um, it probably needs to happen. So that, you know, we do care a lot about Helena, but we also need to care about all children and all educators in the state. So um in a perfect world, I would like to have not a one size fits all. If we could keep our stringent standards, but maybe release them for for other places that need the help, um, that would be the best situation. But um I know that mean that probably is not feasible, but um anyway, it's a sad situation we've come to where we have to um we have to reduce the qualifications to get people into our really chosen wonderful profession. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Kind.
Yes, um, I I don't agree with um lessing the the paths to get accredited for educators. I think that there's a reason that the process is accredited. I mean, and it's it's very common across, you know, many disciplines for that. And I think that when we we change the requirements, um yeah, we're changing what we're giving our students and their education. And and I I don't my perspective, and of course, it's just my perspective and opinion. I don't think that getting accredited is an issue for us and our students. We have many educators who are at this moment are furthering their education in their master's degrees. And so we have, yeah, some of the educators are continuing their um pursuit in their higher education. And so I don't think um lowering that standard is is our issue. I don't think um it's what's best for students. And I don't, I you know, I really question whether it's what's causing teachers to want to teach. Um, I think that holistically, you know, maybe there needs to be a more honest look at why there's difficulty in recruiting educators. I know we're coming off a really difficult time. And there's a lot um of personal um feelings about that time and that. And those those decisions for individuals are real. And you know, nobody can can challenge how one person feels about a situation, but I don't think accreditation is an issue. I I think it lessens what we're serving our students for. And I I don't think it's the issue at heart as to why there's a teacher shortage. Um, that's my personal opinion. But no, I think the standards should remain high. And I think if you look at our educators, um, they're pushing the limits and they're continuing to pursue master's degree and PhD programs. So um certainly, it's not something that we're faced with, but um we want the best of the best. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay, Mr. McKeon.
Thank you. I think the question was, do I know what the requirements are? And I I used to. Because I trained to be a social studies teacher. Way back in seventy-one, seventy-two, I did student teaching. I was going to be a social studies teacher. So I remember all the classes I had to take at psych and methods of teaching and so on. So none of it was particularly difficult. Um, the hard part, of course, is then put it into practice as a student teacher. And then later I did some substituting, but um, it's not an issue for Helena, and I'm not even sure the qualifications or what requirements are for teachers is even an issue for a school board. We are, I mean, we're the consumer of whatever the university, whatever the Board of Education, OPI and the Board of Education and the universities produce. And if we can't find teachers because of th- no one's taking the appropriate classes or the classes are too difficult to get, then we then maybe we should enter in, I guess, on a political basis. And we 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 do belong to the Montana School Board Association. And we rely on them to some degree to deal with those kinds of issues. And as and as I look at the landscape, yes, the, you know, having spent some of my life in eastern Montana, these small places, it's uh, it's hard to get people to move out there, you know, to Glasgow where I graduated from high school. You know, but the, so it's not an issue that I'm overly concerned about, you know, because, you know, we just incented people to leave, which I didn't agree with, but um you know, because of the pending teacher shortage. So there's there's a variety of issues why there aren't enough teachers, that there's not enough students, uh, there's a better paying work somewhere else. You know, college costs are too high, et cetera, et cetera. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you. And finally, Ms. Satri.
Okay, so I think I'm going to start my response um by just echoing the fact that um this profession, it it deserves so much respect. And I think um the kind of professional training that we um, you know, have expected of our students is, you know, commensurate with that. And as Siobhan said earlier, you know, lots of learning, you get all of the training to get your license. Um, and then you need to do, you know, even more experiential training on the job. Um, so I'm concerned about um making exceptions to uh the um the accreditation um and allowing teachers without, you know, as much uh training to go teach. That said, I I also think there are provisional, um, you know, licenses and that those have operated for a long time when situations come up in in particular places where there are teacher shortages. Um, the second thing I'll say is I I feel really grateful that um Helen is a place where so many teachers who are so highly qualified and who are continuing their education, even as they're teaching, want to come to work. Um, I think we do have a a really strong group of teachers and I'm really glad that this isn't our problem here and now. Um, we should count ourselves fortunate for that. So I think that's probably pretty much my my response there. Thank you.
Fabulous. Uh, that wraps up the questions that we have prepared for all of you. Um, this is such a critical role for our community. I think one of you said that we are um get as involved in the in the school system, you're pace setters for our community. Um, and that truly is truly is our reality. So thank you for uh putting your hat in the ring. Uh, thank you for stepping up and um really waving your hand for wanting community leadership. I'm going to pass the baton over to Claire from League of Women Voters, um, as she has a couple of closing statements for us.
Now, I echo Jen's thank you to all the candidates. Um, and thank you, Jen Griskey, for for moderating. Yes. And thank you to the library for setting up the webinar. Um, it takes a lot of technical knowledge that most of us League of Women voters don't have, so we really appreciate the library. Um, keep in mind that ballots for this election, whoops, ballots for this election are going to be mailed out April eighteenth. And they have to be in the election office by May third. So try to get them in the mail, I would say, at least a week before May third, but be looking for them right after April eighteenth. Lastly, please note that the slide, there's going to be a slide uh that has the, this is for the audience. Um, it it has the email address for all of the candidates who were um in the forum tonight. So if anybody in the audience has a question that they would like to email to the candidates to help them make a decision about who to vote for, here's a way to reach them. Lastly, I'd like to say that there was um, there's three positions on the school board that are up. And there were eight candidates. Two candidates chose not to participate in this forum. Um, in alphabetical order, those are Robert Durant and Greg Guthrie. And we had one candidate who did not reply to our efforts to reach him, that's Matt Gurecki. So we really appreciate the five of you who agreed to go through all this. It's a it's an honor to work with you all. Thank you.